First meeting in August, it's already August. Wow, and so with that, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Would you please stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Council, would you sign in, please? Ms. Hawley?
All councilors present, with Councilor Stefano previously requesting to be excused, and a quorum has been declared.
Thank you, next up is Agenda Approval. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No, sir.
Thank you.
That Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda as presented, excusing Mr. Stefano from the meeting.
Second? I've got a motion and second on the Agenda Approval, is there any further discussion? Start voting, please. Ms. Hawley?
The motion carried unanimously.
We'll move on to Citizen Comment. Alamosa City Council welcomes your comments. Citizens wishing to speak may obtain and complete a speaker card through the City Clerk at the start of the meeting. We have one card this evening. Ms. Shauna Hobbs, please come to the podium, you have three minutes. Identify yourself and your address for the record, please.
My name is Shauna Hobbs, and I live here in Alamosa County. I'm just coming tonight to you guys, to give you a quick update. Our deadline was at 5:00 today. We turned in our additional needed signatures to get those ballot questions in front of everyone this November. We were able to go out and gather another, close to 200 signatures in this 10-day period. And I would just like to highlight a couple of things that I learned, and also tell you about some of the people that live in your wards that we talked to. We went to several different areas of the city, all different socioeconomic statuses, all different voter affiliations, and we saw a common thread, that people do want to vote on the issue because they have strong opinions. The feedback was overwhelmingly positive, that it was being presented as a ballot question so that everyone could vote. So I do think that it's a good idea that, you know, citizens be allowed to make the decision in the end. The tax question was another concern of voters, you know, and then once the Citizens Initiative petition rules were explained, that we're not allowed to put those tax questions, it's up to the Council to decide if any additional extra tax should be on there. A lot of them were posed to it for medical, simply because a lot of, well, a lot of insurance companies don't cover anything unless your doctor writes a prescription for it, so I see patients struggle with that as well. So that was a concern of a lot of citizens, to be able to have access without additional tax on it. And also since the state just regulated a 15% additional sales tax on recreational, people that have maybe conditions that don't meet the requirements for medical cards, they wanna be able to go and experiment, or obtain a sav, or a cream, not necessarily dabs or flour, but being able to just go and try these other products as an option. Sometimes they don't meet the criteria, so they don't wanna have to be taxed extra, penalized because of that, when they may still be in the same boat as the recre- and the medical patients. Real quick, I just wanted to give you a little bit of an overview, that it took about a dozen people, a total of about 60-plus hours or so per person, in some way, shape, or form, whether that was canvassing, or going to events, set up, tear down, talking, calling people, social media, there was a lot of people working on this. So I wanna thank everybody that did participate in that, and I'm glad that there's a way that they can petition you guys to put this on the ballot. I felt kinda left out, I couldn't even sign it myself, cuz I'm not a elector here, but real quick, I also wanna let you know that the Senior Citizens Center's gonna be hosting some people from the United University of Colorado at Colorado Springs, for a Senior Citizens Study on August 11th at 12:30. So if anybody is interested in that, please go and attend, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hobbs, appreciate your time. Shauna's card is the only one I have, is there anyone else in the audience that... We'll then move on to follow-up, is there any follow-up? Move on to Consent Calendar A. The Consent Calendar allows multiple actions with one motion. Consent Calendar A contains routine items which have been recommended for action by staff or advisory boards. Council may remove a Consent Calendar item for separate consideration. Tonight we have five items. We have the approval of the minutes of the meeting for July 19, 2017, the approval of the minutes of a special meeting, July 24, 2017, the June expenditure report and financial statements, authorize the Mayor to execute grant agreement for rehabilitation of runway 20 slash, 2-20, sorry, and runway lighting system for $6,382,570, Agreement Number 3-08-0002-02202017, and the fiber line to cemetery slash parks building.
I move that we approve Consent Calendar A.
I'll second.
I've got a motion and a second to approve Consent Calendar A, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, start voting, please. Ms. Hawley?
The motion carried unanimously.
Move on to regular business. We have a presentation this evening from Mr. Jim Poston, Locomotive Engine 169. Jim, thank you for being here.
Thank you for the time. I'm Jim Poston, from Monte Vista, Colorado. While I was working on the steam locomotive 463, which is now operating on the Coopers and Toltic scenic railroad, I got word that, gee, Alamosa's got a steam engine as well. So to make a long story short, there's the train, it's got the lettering, the paint onboard, the long-term goal is to get the train operational again. Progress on the train, you're aware of the lettering and the painting that's been done, we've had a limited number of volunteers, we've only had two out of three people that are normally with the train. And with the number of visitors that we've had, a lot of our time has been spent telling about the history of the train, anywhere from the little scudders in first or second grade, up to people that used to play on the train when it was in the park. The National Narrow Gauge Convention, which is nationwide, brings people from all over the world, is going to be in Denver, unfortunately, at the time of the lead-up to early iron. So we may have to double-team, or bypass the early iron event, but that gets down to the expenses. There's a registration fee for the convention, Airbnb, we made the reservations, it'll be about $200 for us to have the lodging for two or three days up in the Denver area. The insurance for the directors and officers, that it was paid out of the treasury, that was $985 this year. The liability insurance, which was also paid out of the treasury, was close to $500 this year, and that's all from contributions that are made, we've made over $200, just for people putting money into our donation jar at the train. We're open the first Saturday of each month, we've got a week-long work session, volunteer session, in May, in June, and July, so we kinda like to find out what the long-term plans are of the city for the train. We've had a similar meeting with Randy Wright of the Alamosa County Economic Development Council slash Chamber of Commerce, the actual owners of the train, as near as we can tell. And we just wanna see what the city's plans are for the train. There are a lot of people that stop by, and they say, "Man, we saw the train, we saw the gate was open." Usually when we come by, the gate is closed, but, you know, here you are, and we'll make the donation, and we used to play on it when we were kids. So at this point, well, prior to this time, we haven't asked the city for the funding to support the insurance and so forth, but we are at a point where it's, we can't depend on the donations, the contributions anymore, so we would like the city to take us into consideration when it's time to review the budget.
Thank you, Jim, Councilor Hill.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Jim, for your presentation, and thank you for the upkeep of the train. Can you, can you tell me what you think the vision should be for the engine?
I'm sorry?
What do you think the vision of the train should be?
I personally believe that train is operable. We can work on it at the appropriate facility, we can provide jobs, we can bring in the true steam locomotive experts to Alamosa. The train does need to be dismantled, because you don't wanna go to a host railroad and have the train break down three to five miles outside of the departure, but that brings up the locomotive number 168, which is the twin sister, to our 169. That engine was on display in Colorado Springs at Antlers Park for a goodly number of years, and they've been, they hauled the engine off its display in Colorado Springs, took it down to Antonito, where they've got the expertise, they've got the skillset to work on that train, but in my opinion, they've made more progress in two to three years on that steam locomotive than they have on the locomotive that we've had sitting in the pavilion since 2002. So to answer your question, and I digressed a little bit, or I digress a lot, I would like to, I would like to see the engine operate. It's at the wishes of the owners of the train, of the city of Alamosa, so that we would have a sign or replacement steam engine saying, "The locomotive that belongs here is out earning its keep on the Coopers and Toltic, the Durango and Silverton, anyplace where you've got the narrow gauge rails, the East Broad Top in Pennsylvania, if somebody wants to write a big enough check for it." But the home of that locomotive is Alamosa. Alamosa used to be a railroading town, it used to be a major, major industry here, and I'd like to see it brought back.
Councilor Griggo?
I had a comment, and then two questions. First, my comment, I believe that engine, that they worked on it before, and they got it operable. Years back, they spent a lot of money putting that together, and finally, when it was staged there, I think they even used it at one time, Jim. So I don't know if, how you know that it's not operable, or you know more about trains than we do, but I know from the history part of it, it was a lot of money spent, and that, the whole thing was refurbished, the engine was refurbished, and they were gonna use it down south at one time, and then I don't know what fell through, that they never did. So I would look into that a little bit on the history part.
Well, historically, both the 168 and the 169, they last operated in 1939, so it has been a while. Prior to the display in the pavilion, the 169 was pressure-tested, and it was found that with a few minor repairs, relatively minor repairs to the boiler, that engine could be made operable again. But it's been since before World War II, since before Pearl Harbor, that either steam engine was operated. The 463 on the Coopers and Toltic, since 1970, that one has been kind of up and down, but that is steam railroading.
But I know from being here probably the longest, there was a lot of money put into that engine, it was sent somewhere, and it was worked on, and it was brought back, and then I don't know, from there, we kinda lost, you know, control of it. But on my questions, can you tell me a little bit more about the insurance part? There's two parts of insurance here, you got one for $985 and $500, can you?
Yes.
Give me a little bit more breakdown, and what's insured, and why is it insured?
The $985 is the director's, director's and officer's insurance, that any organization that I'm aware of is required to have, and we do get that through, I believe through CIA Levitt Company. The liability insurance, which is the $500 figure that I mentioned, is for the actual work on the train, and when that policy came up for renewal, I kinda raised an eyebrow at the scope of the liability coverage, what that covered versus what we'd actually like to do with the train, and there's a discrepancy there.
What other expenses do you have out there, is it the paint, and I don't know what other works you do there on the train that you need the funding and stuff for?
The funding, we're estimating it between $500,000 to $1 million to get the locomotive operating again, and that estimate is actually revised downward, because the word that I've got from the Coopers and Toltic, and their work on the 168, even though they've got the expertise, is they're saying it's about $500,000 to get that engine operating. In my opinion, having looked at both steam locomotives, I think the 169 is in better mechanical condition. Yes, there is work to be done on that. So in the long term, the funding would be required for re-fluing the boiler, repairs to the boiler itself, the braces, the stables, which may be foreign to a lot of you in the audience, but it's work that needs to be done. The machine work, none of it comes cheap, and because it's a dying art, a dying industry, the experts for the steam trains are few and far between. The gentleman that was part of the 148 from transport from Monte Vista back down to Florida for U.S. Sugar is one of the steam locomotive experts. He is heavily involved with the locomotive 611 out of Norfolk, Virginia, and they've had that steam engine operating. So kind of a roundabout way to answer your question, you can't go down to Napa and order a lot of parts off the shelf.
Sure, no, I understand. My final question is, you said the owners is the Chamber?
As near as we can tell, it's a combination of the Chamber of Commerce and the Alamosa County Economic Development Council. They own the train, the city owns the pavilion, and we provide the work.
And approximately three years ago, I believe the marketing district had indicated some interest in owning it. At that point in time, all the files that the ACID and Chamber had were given to the marketing board to review, but then nothing was done, so we've actually, I think, lost some of the documentation for some of this as well.
Cuz I think the city put together a grant for the pavilion, and were able to build that pavilion, and, cuz at one time it sat right there, almost where, right there by the old library, and then we came back, and we were able to get funding to fit, to work on the engine itself, and then put the pavilion down, and that's how it ended up right there, right as you come over the bridge. So I think the city, and I don't know what constraints we have, Heather, as far as if we have submitted monies for grants to build pavilions and stuff, is that turned over to somebody, or just the train belongs to?
It's just the train, it's just, so the city owns the pavilion, the train is owned by ACID slash Chamber.
Okay, right, thank you, thank you, Jim, very much, and...
Thank you, sir.
I don't know how long you've worked with this, you know, with the train, but there's gotta be some kind of stuff out there that says that that engine was operable, from the last I know.
It is operable, but it's gonna take a lot of work to make it reliable.
Oh, reliable?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Councilor Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor. Jim, thank you so much for this presentation. I think I remember last year, we were gonna have an overnight out at the locomotive, and that didn't happen, right? Are you planning anything like that for the kids, or anything?
We certainly are.
Okay.
We would, we would like to have a bunkin' with the B1, as we were calling it, but the weather got to be a little on the chilly side, so we scrubbed that for that time of year. We also had a Santa Claus that was all set to be with the, you've got Santa Claus, and the snow, and the steam train, and the kids, how great is that? But there were a number of entities that wanted to be named insured on the policy, so that ties in with us having to scrub that. But if you go inside the business car, you'll see some of the little Christmas lights that are all strung up, cuz we were probably within three or four weeks, and we did have one of our volunteers offer to pay the one-time insurance binder for that particular event. You know, my thinking is, you've got the steam train, you've got Santa Claus, you've got the hot chocolate and candy canes, somebody's there with a picture, and somebody's writing down what the kids really want for Christmas, that works for me.
And so the other question I had, I think, was more for Heather, would a funding request like this, like for the DNO and stuff, go through the grant process that we have, or the outside funding, how would that work?
Well, I think, you know, there needs to be some discussion on this. My perspective is, you know, if we were just talking the insurance and some of that, and then the group continued in a volunteer fashion to refurbish it, and then those types of things, that's one type of scenario. If it's, there's an expectation that we're going to build towards the vision that's been presented tonight, that's an entirely different scenario and commitment, and so I'd wanna make sure we're careful in managing expectations. So I think, are we scheduled for a meeting next week?
Yes.
Okay, so this is, I haven't processed any of this, this is the first, we've got a meeting scheduled for next week, which I think probably this is what you were gonna review, maybe, or?
Yes.
Okay, so we do have a meeting scheduled for that, I think it's a matter of just making sure we have the same expectations going forward. If it's something that we're just regularly going to cover that, and that's something Council feels is important, then we would look for an appropriate line item. If it's something that you would want us to facilitate discussions with the marketing board, since they seem to have had an interest at one point, we could try to help with that as well. So I just, I think there's probably just some discussions that could be beneficial towards this, I guess is a long way to answer that.
Okay, thank you, any other comments? Jim, thank you very much, oh, Councilor Coleman?
You can go ahead, ma'am.
No, go ahead.
Okay. Jim, I just wanted to thank you again, because every year when you come out, it's always a pleasure to hear the updates that are going on with the local 169, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you, we're happy to provide.
Jim, this is obviously a project that has gone on for quite a while, and probably will continue to go on for quite a while, you know, and if there would be money, we wouldn't have any issues with 169, it'd be out of operational, and probably doing what it's supposed to be, but unfortunately, when you're looking at a half a million dollar investment just to make it operational, that becomes a little bit more of a challenge for anybody that either owns it, or wants to contribute in any way, shape, or form. Are there any grants available out there nationwide, or through the railroad industry that would be of benefit?
There are grants that we have applied for, the Rocky Mountain Railroad Club has a grant that we've applied for, unfortunately, we didn't make the cutoff on that, but the, their funding did go to what I consider to be appropriate railroad resources. The Sangre de Cristo National Historic Area, I believe, has a funding grant with a number of stipulations on it, that if we find out about it about a week ahead of time, before their deadline, there's just not enough time to apply for it. The donations that we've had from the visitors have been anywhere from pocket change on up to $20 and $40, which over a period of time does add up, and the history of the train, the opportunity for anybody to be that close to an engine that, we put together a calendar that shows from the time the city takes down the Christmas lights, we could have the train operating by Labor Day, with unlimited resources, of course.
Definitely, well, I guess where I'm heading with this, if there's an opportunity for the city to become involved in the grant process of, you know, I think it would probably be something that we'd like to hear about from you.
Okay.
Okay?
I will pursue that.
Appreciate that.
One last comment, Mayor, if I may.
Councilor Griggo?
As far as direction, I think we need to wait for that meeting that you guys are gonna have, and then from there, decide what direction Council's gonna go, if we're gonna be involved with, I guess, other partners, or other partners wanna do something, so I think we'll try to give you some kind of direction, we'll, maybe that meeting that's gonna happen this next week or so, should shed maybe a little more light, and Heather will give us better direction on where we stand as far as, so.
Well, the locomotive is 134 years old this year, so when it turns 135, 136, I think she'll still be waiting for us.
Good deal, thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim, appreciate your time.
Thank you, everybody.
Move on to business brought forward by city staff. Tonight we have one issue for finance, I have a public hearing and second reading on Ordinance Number 21-2017, authorizing and approving the execution and delivery of a lease purchase and sublease agreement, and other documents and actions in connection with financing the city's ICE multipurpose facility project. Ms. Heather, or is this...
Actually, I'll do that one. Mayor, I've been working with our bond counsel, Rick Budden, and representatives of bank counsel on this and associated documents, so as we discussed on first reading, this is the parameters ordinance, essentially, for the funding for the ICE rink multipurpose pavilion, and this sets out what the parameters of that lease purchase certificate of participation funding will be. As you will recall, the total amount to be funded, or the total amount of principal to be authorized under the parameters of ordinance is 2.4 million. This accounts for both the 2.258 million in estimated construction costs, plus any costs of issuance that relate to the certificate of participation. We do not believe that will be anywhere close to the 2.4, will certainly be above the 2.258, but below the 2.4. So this sets 2.4 as the maximum principal, sets 3, let me find it, 3.36 million as the total repayment, so that's principal plus accumulated interest over the 20-year term of the certificates of participation. And the 3.36 million figure was a conservative projection based on outside worst-case scenario estimates of where the interest rates may lock in, once we're finally able to close a, estimated closing date of September 8th of this year. We expect that interest rate to be closer to the 3.07%, which is what it was when the bids were in, but for conservative purposes and planning purposes, the parameters ordinance allows for an increase up to about 3.6%, 3.57%, if that's necessary, we don't believe that it will be. So that's the situation.
Thank you, Rick, for that background information, and with that, I will open the public hearing on Ordinance Number 21-2017. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak for or against this ordinance, please approach the podium and make your wishes known. Mr. McCann?
Dan McCann, 1809 Sunset Drive, Alamosa, Colorado. The percentages are really neat. Today, I think the 10-year bond went for about 2.26, it was run between 2.26, 2.7, and you look at that, and the way they're looking at the economics for the next year or so, they don't expect the growth that a lot of people want. Now, who knows? Cuz the agenda's, what's going on, the agenda back there, they're trying to put things together, but the longer it takes, the better off you're gonna be on your bonds. And it's, this is the time to do bonds, if you're in cities, boy, these interest rates are unbelievable. Now, some of the... Now, some of the commodity markets have gone up, some of the commodities have gone up, and that inflation can hit. But right now, hey, this is a great time for cities to expand with municipal bonds. I mean, it's just like free money for them. And by the way, buy a house now, too, you know? It's just how it works. Things fluctuate. The stock market fluctuate just like the weather.
Thank you, Mr. McCann. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak for or against this ordinance? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on ordinance number 21-2017 and bring it to council for further discussion or a decision. Councilor Gregel.
I had a question. So the final payment on this 3.36 is going to be 175,000 a year? From the communication, Eric, or Heather?
That would, yeah, that will be the maximum allowable payment. Again, because we expect the interest rate to come in lower, and we expect the total amount of principal to be below the 2.4 million, the actual annual payment will almost certainly be less than 175,000 a year. But that's the cap on what it could be. And the way the bond is set up, there would be two payments per year. So between those two payments, they will total less than 175,000 per year. And they, and they fluctuate. I mean, if you've opened up the bond summary statistics, attachments, the, it's, it's not like your home loan, which is exactly the same amount every single month. It's financial wizardry that I don't understand. So they fluctuate from year to year, but not within a very broad range.
So the 175 is the worst-case scenario?
175 is worst-case scenario. And again, because they fluctuate, even if we hit one year where it's 175, it won't be every year is 175. That would be the, the highest year that it could be.
Thank you, Eric.
Councilor Vehill.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we approve ordinance number 21-2017.
Counselor, um, I'm sorry.
I'll second it.
Okay, I've got a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, start voting, please. Ms. Holly.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Move on to a police item. We have a public hearing and second reading on ordinance number 20-2017, an ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Alamosa School District to provide a school resource officer for the Alamosa Police Department to, from the Alamosa Police Department to the Alamosa School Board. Thank you for being here, Chief.
Mr. Mayor, Council, again, this is to renew the IGA with the Alamosa School District to provide a school resource officer within the district, district itself. So that's why we're here tonight, is for the public hearing on that proposed IGA.
Thank you, Chief. So with that, I will open the public hearing on ordinance number 20-2017. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak for or against this ordinance? Please approach the podium, make your wishes known. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing on ordinance number 20-2017 and bring it to council for a decision or further discussion. Counselor Vehill.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we approve ordinance number 20-2017, an ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement with Alamosa School District to provide a school resource officer from the Alamosa Police Department.
Counselor Daniel.
I second.
I've got a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, start voting, please. Missing one? Ms. Holly.
The motion carried unanimously.
Move on to fire. We've got a resolution number 18-2017, a resolution adopting the 2016 update to the Alamosa County Hazard Mitigation Plan. Thank you for being here, Chief.
Mayor, Council, before you tonight is the adoption of the Hazard Mitigation Plan that Francis Song, County Emergency Manager, came in and talked to you about, oh, a couple, three months ago. Basically, we went through all of the plan. There were a few little changes that Eric and Pat found that we needed to make within the city side. We did get those changes made. So Francis is here to answer any questions that you guys may have, or any thoughts on the process.
Thank you, Chief. Welcome, Francis.
Hello, Mayor. Hello, city council staff. My name's Francis. I'm the Alamosa County City Emergency Correction, Alamosa County Emergency Manager. And yes, what we have before you today is the adoption of the Alamosa County 2016 update to the Hazard Mitigation Plan. This follows FEMA guidelines for creating such a hazard mitigation plan. It was written and updated in combination and conjunction with four other counties of the San Luis Valley All Hazards Region, if you will. All of them are pending final adoption by their respective stakeholders, townships, municipalities, and counties as well. For this effort here for 2016's updates, the city was one of five partner stakeholder organizations and jurisdictions. The other, you know, the others being the City Fire Protection District, the County of Alamosa, the Rio Grande Water Conservation District, and the Town of Hooper. So everything should be in front of you. Everything should have been presented in front of you. Again, this, the plan in and of itself was a culmination of about a year's worth of effort, process, combination, planning, updates, and revisions. And you can expect probably in about five years or so of time, another update, because that's just what the FEMA guidance is currently for this program and this planning process. So are there any questions or anything like that?
Yes. Counselor Vehill.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Song, how long did it take you to get this done?
It was about a year's worth overall, when you kind of examine the, the way we started it off. Actually, it followed pretty much the calendar year of 2016, when you look at the overall process. We knew this update was coming, and about the fall of 2015 is when the other emergency managers with David Osborne, the Regional Field Manager from the Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Management, we all initially first got together, noticed there was an update coming. And we were reminded, while this, this plan and this program is not mandatory by any means or any kind of guidance established by FEMA, it was strongly encouraged that we update it so that we don't lose any of the grant, premium, the grant deliverables, the grant coverage and the grant protection that it offered through specifically what FEMA calls the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, HMP. We worked with a specialist from the Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Management, Ms. Patricia Gavelda. She's a mitigation specialist. And we hired a contractor, Mr. Bob Walt, through a process, and he came out as the, the winning bidder. And we got started in January. I covered it with my two MAC meetings, is what they're called, my two multi-agency coordination meetings, as well as a separate meeting for receiving input from the, the public, and then making it available online through the websites of the city and the county for the public to offer input as well. All, when that, that was all said and done, it was about December of 2016 was when we finally submitted it to the state, who in turn reviewed it, and then submitted it to FEMA on our behalf. And the first couple of months of this year in 2017 is when, is when we got the initial feedback. We incorporated the feedback that FEMA wanted to see, and we incorporated the feedback that was offered through our partner organizations and jurisdictions, and this is where we are now, at the final process before FEMA takes into account all the adoption resolutions and the final draft of the plan in itself. So.
Thank you.
Thank you, Francis. Counselor Daniel.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much, Francis. This is awesome work for 126 pages. I will tell you, I did not read the whole thing, but I do have a question about some of the high-level overview stuff.
Sure.
So it looks like numbers 13 through 17 are specific to this city, and three of them are high priorities. Do we know, and Chief, do we have a, like, subcommittee working on this, or Pat, or how do, how are we going to implement these changes, and what does that look like for the city?
Do you guys want to help answer that one? We don't have a committee set up at this point, but.
Sure. So the ones that are high priority, the, the two that are, have been in the city's capital improvement program for many years, and we are, are working through federal bureaucracy with them, are pursuing the recertification of the levy, and then after that's done, updating the flood insurance rate maps. So that is an ongoing process, and, and I, that's updated in your budget every year. I don't know where we sit on that currently, Heather Mae. No more than I do.
We'll have more definitive updates soon, but we've, we've been looking at ways of what's required for that certification, and we sometimes get different answers. And then we thought we had a lead in order to get that maybe done from previous studies, so we wouldn't have to spend as much. And so that, there's just been a lot of leads that we've been following. But it is something that is still moving forward, and we'll, we'll have a more specific update. But no, we don't have a committee on that. In regards to like the shelter plan and social media effort and those types of things, about a year ago, we did have someone create a very rough draft of an emergency operation plan for the city. And within that plan would cover what our sheltering plan is, what our PIO would be, and, and all of those types of responses. So that is something where we have, and again, a very rough draft. And the person shaking his head over there is the one that was tasked, along with Chief Oaks, to, to begin taking a look at that in their free time and, and pulling that together. So it's something that we're going to be moving more to the forefront to get our EOP done, and so that's where those would be handled. In regards to the implementation into the new comp plan, obviously, we would want to make sure if there's anything we need to address from a hazards perspective, we'll take a look at that. And the levy was already in the comp plan, so we're compliant with that.
Thank you very much. I didn't mean to put you on the spot, so I apologize for that. The, so is this like a five-year plan, or do we just update it every five years to make sure any new hazards haven't come magically in?
Right. So, so the guidance right now is for it to be updated every five years. That's, that's FEMA's guidance. And they actually, the, the way we were able to hire the contractor for this five-year update actually came from the grant program that the previous plan made eligible for us. It was kind of like a, a way to self-sustain itself. And actually, to kind of address your previous question there, too, what's interesting about this whole process is that FEMA won't, there's no penalties incurred. There's nothing lost if we show that, you know, some of these weren't achieved within the five-year update. And, and I can say that because for some of the deliverables, deliverables we had in the 2011 update, you know, a, a lot of them were just ongoing projects. It's, it's often said that recovery is the longest phase of any part of emergency management or disaster recovery. Anybody in, in that field will tell you that. But there wasn't anything incurred by that, or, or penalties associated with that. So it, it's just the best effort that we present. And then, as you can see within the executive summary itself, too, you're, you're not alone ever in that whole process. All it did was tie which actions, which mitigation actions were going to be taken by which organizations as the lead. The others fall in, in a, basically in a support capacity at that point. And, and so, and we were able to kind of brainstorm all that at the second MAC group meeting last year, when that kind of transitioned into a meeting to talk about this effort. So within five years' time, when, when that deadline comes through, you know, we'll just show what we could get done, what we want to carry over, what we want to drop, and then just go from there with the guidance, you know, being established the way it is. So.
Very good. So you were, you were talking about things that were going to get done within the next five years. And obviously, there's no commitment by FEMA for recertification of the levy. Is that correct?
Well.
Did I understand that correctly?
So, so that's, that's a different process altogether. I'm still kind of trying to understand about that whole process separately. But for the hazard mitigation side of things, for this plan and what this plan discusses, the, the two aren't tied together. Because while it, it talks about different projects that are overlapping different fields and different parts of FEMA, it, again, it just shows a best effort for this plan. And what happens to the levy, what happens to any of the other critical infrastructure that we outlined in this plan, has nothing to do with the outcome of this plan. So it, it kind of, the whole plan in and of itself reads as kind of like a five-year update to what we've experienced so far as a jurisdiction and the other respective jurisdictions, what we want to focus on for our efforts, and, and that's it. In, in the five years' time when that next update comes around, if the respective jurisdiction wants to drop something or change priorities, they're more than welcome to do so. And that's what FEMA expects to see, to show that this is a constant, living, ongoing process, that we're not just copying and pasting the entire plan over and calling it a five-year update. So.
Basically, basically, it's to serve as a guidance for communities to work towards things to fix.
Thank you for clearing that up for me. Appreciate it. Counselor Gregel.
Well, thank you, Francis, and thank you, Chief, for all your hard work. And if there's no further questions, I'll make the motion when we pass Resolution Number 18-2017, a resolution adopting the 2016 update to the Alamosa County Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Second.
I've got a motion to second. Is there any further discussion on Resolution 18-2017? Seeing none, start voting, please. Ms. Holly.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Francis. Appreciate your presence. Move on to city clerk, municipal court. We have a, two items. Resolution number 19-2017, a resolution to conduct the regular city election pursuant to the Uniform Election Code. Is this Ms. Holly?
That's me. So this is, this Resolution Number 19 is just the standard resolution that we do every election. Normally, municipal, municipalities follow Title 31, the Municipal Election Code. But for us to do a coordinated election, we have to follow the Uniform Election Code under Title I. So this resolution sets that.
Thank you, Ms. Holly. Counselor Vehill.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we approve Resolution Number 19-2017.
I'll second.
Counselor Daniel. I've got a motion to second. Is there any further discussion on Resolution Number 19-2017? Seeing none, start voting, please. Ms. Holly.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. We'll now move on to the first reading on ordinance number 22-2017, an ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement with Alamosa County for conduct of the November 7th, 2017 coordinated election. Ms. Holly.
It's basically just what you said. This is the IGA with the county to coordinate our election for this November's election year.
Thank you. Counselor Vehill.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick comment, then I'm going to make a motion. I've been here for 10 years now, and every time there's a, an election here in town, Melanie Woodard and the staff down at the county do a phenomenal job, making sure there's no issues with any type of election. So I just really appreciate that. So I'll move that we approve ordinance number 22-2017, and set it for a public hearing on August 16th or soon thereafter.
I'll second.
I've got a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, start voting, please. Ms. Holly.
The motion carried unanimously.
Move on to city manager legal. We have a public hearing and second reading on ordinance number 19-2017, and ordinance amending section 16-1 and 16-37 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Alamosa to update and streamline references to the City of Alamosa standard construction specifications. Eric.
Thank you, Mayor. As we discussed on first reading, this really is more of a bookkeeping or a housekeeping measure than anything else. The ordinance is currently referenced 1987 standard construction standards in a, a few places. That needs to be fixed because we're up to 2012. And so this just references the currently adopted standards. And then, secondly, the ordinance streamlines by allowing the Public Works Director to promulgate standard construction specifications amended as he deems fit, without having to go through either an ordinance or a council approval process for that. And of course, he would do that and, and let you know what he's doing when he's doing that. If you get a rogue Public Works Director, which certainly won't happen during Pat Steenberg's tenure, but if you, if you do happen to get a rogue Public Works Director, as we discussed at the last meeting, you would certainly hear about that. And from the contractors who would be affected and would have an, an opportunity to address any issues. So this really puts the expert, puts the, the drafting of those specifications in the hands of the people who you have hired to have that expertise.
Thank you, Counselor. And so with that, I will open the public hearing on ordinance number 19- And so with that, I will open the public hearing on ordinance number 19 2017. If there's anyone in the audience wishing to speak for or against this ordinance, please approach the podium and make your wishes known. Mr. McCann.
Dan McCann, 8209 Sunset Drive, Alamosa, Colorado. This is a real good idea because we spend a lot of time here and I like to get home early. So you can do something that makes it easier, which is within the law, and he is the expert. And like, if you've got a rogue or something, somebody does something bad, that's what jail is for.
Thank you, Mr. McCann. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak for or against this ordinance? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on ordinance number 19 2017 and bring it back to council for a further discussion or a decision. Counsel Hensley.
I go ahead and move that we adopt ordinance number 19 2017 on second reading.
Counsel Coleman.
I second.
I've got a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, start voting please. Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. We'll move on to discussion on November ballot language. Ms., ah, we have our city manager. Thank you.
Thank you Mayor. Um, there has been a lot of discussion from council on some different ballot, um, items that are going to be coming up in November, just to move through in the same order that they appear in your council communication. The first one, and it's a little bit more straightforward and I don't anticipate much discussion, but it's the draft language for Senate Bill 152 opt-out language. This is the item that would allow the city to partner with private entities in order to try to encourage deployment of broadband. We have been clear in our messaging that the city has no intent in wanting to be like Longmont where they actually offer it as a utility, but the language that's required for us to opt out is, is what's taken from the state level and so what's in front of you is, there is, is what the city attorney has drafted. Um, you know, really, we just want to do what we can to either apply for grants or to let our right-of-way or some of our facilities be used appropriately, those types of things to encourage the deployment of, of broadband. Moving on to the next one, council had voted to move forward to explore the wording for a pay increase for council and mayor. When that meeting ended, um, what appeared to be the direction from council was for it to just be a flat amount. Staff wasn't sure if you were really 100% done processing on that, so we did draft up another type of, um, question that could be put to the voters as well, or you can combine them. And so the first question you see there takes it to where you would go from $4,800 per year to whatever amount you want to put towards the voters and then for the mayor, it would be $7,200 per year to whatever that, so that's if you wanted to do just a flat rate increase. The other option you would have available to you is if you wanted the salaries to be increased incrementally and to have those tied to the United States Bureau of Labor Statistic, Consumer Price Index, where the Denver Boulder Greeley and all items, consumers are a successor index rounded to the nearest lowest $25. So you could do it that way as well. Your third option is if you wanted to do a flat rate increase now and then for the future have it be an incremental increase, you could kind of combine those languages. So what we would be looking for tonight from council is which one of those you are interested in of those three options and then if you are interested in a flat amount, we do need to kind of, we wanted council to discuss what that number would be. I do want to be clear, um, and I meant to start out with this, you are not voting on this item tonight. We just wanted you to discuss it and we would be bringing it for your official vote in September. So on all of these language items, we're not doing a vote tonight. We just want council discussion and hopefully clear direction, but not a vote. The last item is the sales tax and excise taxes on marijuana. We drafted, um, two different questions for you. We felt that the work session council held, the direction was pretty clear that you did not want taxes to be grouped together. We weren't sure if it was as clear how you felt about doing anything on medical at all. There seemed to maybe still be potential debate related to that. So what we did is we did draft two separate questions, one for the retail recreational and in there you do have a blank spot to what that percentage would be. As staff shared in that study session, we would recommend a minimum of 5%. We also reattached to this council communication, all the other communities and, and where they are in their percentage sales tax. In regards to medical, um, something that I'm not sure we've pointed out from a strategy perspective is there may be some philosophies out there, why you should not tax medical or tax it at a lower level. The other thing we want council to consider as you're, you're having this discussion is that there is always a chance that medical will pass and retail recreation won't pass and if that is the case, we will still have some implications from monitoring the licenses and all of that related to just the medical. And so I guess from a staff perspective, um, we wouldn't say it necessarily needs to be as high as the recreational, but maybe still consider a smaller tax in the off-chance that it may be the only one that passes and that we're able to, to cover some of the expenses for regulating, um, the, the medical. But we also understand that for some of the philosophical reasons, you may still want to, to pass on that, but there is a, a blank there for you guys to discuss the percentage. Eric, did I miss anything?
You didn't, but, um, I had actually had a thought about a week ago and then forgot about it and then I had the thought again as Heather was running this through with you, through this with you. You will want to consider with respect to the pay increase question, when that would become effective as well, because not only does, that has a lot of implications for, um, or it could have a lot of implications for various, uh, concerns about the questions that might be raised by voters. For instance, well, are you guys just voting a pay increase for yourselves or does it not become effective until two years from now or four years from now or what? So, uh, we, I did not put in for your consideration what the effective date is, but I think you'll want to think about that issue as well.
Thank you Eric. Counsel Daniel.
Thank you. I, I just have a clarifying question. The 15% tax that did get passed at the state level for recreational marijuana, does any of that come to the communities that have recreation facilities or does it all go to state enforcement? I, I don't remember.
Yeah, I believe there, if, if we have those facilities, we do get a, it's like 2% of it or something. It's a small kickback.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Very good. So shall we just talk about, um, just go down the list? Anyone want to offer an opinion? Counsel V. Hill?
Thank you Mayor. I, for the first one, I think it's straightforward and I think the language is, is effective for what we want to put on there for November.
Thank you. 152?
Yes, sir.
Thank you Counselor Daniel.
Um, I, I do agree, this is the language that has to be in there. There can't be any other clarifying language for people, because I do think it's a little confusing.
You know, there can be other language. Yes, we can, we can put other clarifying language in. Some of the language that is stilted has to be stilted. So for instance, the, uh, advanced services that we have to use and in fact, it was our addition to put in the parentheses, high-speed internet, because nobody knows what advanced services are, but, uh, that's the language that the statute uses.
Very good. There are many communities throughout Colorado that have passed 152 and, um, Eric, you obviously have, um, gone through a lot of that language and consolidated that for our purposes.
Yes, lawyers are not very original people in general, so there is a lot of plagiarism involved in the law and this question in particular embodies a lot of plagiarism. But the high-speed internet explanation of advanced services, that's my idea.
Thank you. Counsel Hensley.
So on the ballot, is it going to have the SB 152 opt-out language, that little paragraph, or is it only going to be the ballot title and text?
It would only be the ballot title and text.
Oh, because I really like the stuff above it better.
Well, the stuff, the stuff above it would go in the blue book. So, you know, the, the election book that has the, what is this about and the pros and the cons.
Got it. So it would be in there then?
It would be in the blue book, but when it shows up on the ballot, it won't be on the ballot.
Very good. I like the way it starts out without increasing taxes, so. Any further discussion on that? You don't want it, do you want a decision on this?
No, we don't want to vote. Um, it's just if there, I guess if there's anyone that has any other heartburn before you move on or if you move on to the next one, we're good.
I think, I think there's no heartburn here. I don't see any, so.
Right, and we, and we don't need a, a decision on any of these and so if you come up to ones where you're not coming up to a, a resolution of, of what it should look like, that's fine. We just want to kind of get a feel for where you're going. If you want us to come tinker with some more language and come back to you with other options, we need to know that. We're not looking for a definitive answer of what the question needs to look like tonight.
Thank you Counselor. Counsel Gregel?
How much time do we have then Eric? Like you say-
Uh, the, the resolution certifying the ballot language is on for your September 6th meeting.
Okay. September 6th, okay. Move on to the pay increase for council and mayor. You've got two or three different ways to look at this. Counsel Gregel?
I like the idea of, of doing something flat and then combining, like you said Heather, uh, something that with, what'd you say, the cost of living or-
Yes, the incremental tie to the language that Eric has there, yes.
And, uh, in the past, you know, when something like this comes on and if it's passed, it should come on when city council people come on board or whatever that time is Eric. You know, not, not a two-year, not a three-year, but automatically in the past, the way, that's the way it's handled, you know? That, that's the way we've handled it, where it takes effect, uh, what is it, in January or when do the council people come on? The newly elected?
Well, council people come on the first meeting after they're, um, canvassed and, and their election is certified, so it's usually the first meeting in December. The way I wrote this language was that it'll be, begin the first fiscal quarter of 2018, so it would be January.
Okay.
But what I threw out for your consideration was whether you wanted to delay that.
And then he also has, um, the way I'm reading this Eric, and correct me if I'm wrong, is this, the increase wouldn't be every year, it would be every four years. There would be an incremental increase tied to this. So the, what that does get you is you're not having to keep going back to the voters on this item.
And also what some of us have discussed is, is, you know, right now we're getting $400 a month, take that to an increase of 200, which would take it to 600 a month, so. And I don't know how everybody else feels, but.
Counsel V. Hill?
Thank you Mayor. So I respectfully disagree with you Charlie. I think we should, uh, go with the sex, second option based on the, uh, what is it called? The, the, the Consumer Price Index, um, because that's what I said a few, a few meetings ago when we talked about this, so I'm going to keep it, keep going with that. I don't think we should do a flat rate because then if we go a flat rate, we might be over what that Consumer Price Index might be.
What do you mean by over?
Um, if, if the raise is reflect, is reflecting the, where the CPI is, I don't want to, I never want to be over that either.
Sure, and I appreciate that, but when you haven't had a raise in 20 years, you know, it, and, you know, I, I, I look at it different, but I, I respect your, your thoughts actually.
What would the, what would that numerical number be in option number two?
If we were to do that, it was, um, actually it's smaller than I believe the 200. It would take me a minute. It was an email from, um, from Judy that, um, so if you want to move on to a different question, I can let you know if we were to do a flat amount based on the Consumer Price Index, what that would be, I'll find that for you.
I'd like the idea of a, a $200 increase initially with a four-year, um, time span for, uh, the CPI. I, I think that, uh, that's probably what I'd like to see. We're not voting on anything this evening.
No, you're not. I guess what the question, do you want us to come up with any different kind of language or, or different approaches is the question. You guys can vote on filling in the blanks and picking which one of these you're going to do or how you're going to combine them at your September meeting and you can cogitate it between now and then, but if you want something different or a different approach presented to you, we need to know that so that we can get that in place for you.
I think the other thing is, um, unless you have the other three change their mind to vote in affirmative, you, you need to make sure you reach some kind of conclusion. So I'm not sure how much of a line in the sand that is for Counselor V. Hill in regards to a flat 200. I can tell you, I'm finding the email, but I know it's more, 200's more than what the CPI would have been. So if you want to continue those discussions, I'm continuing to look for that.
I can, Mayor, if I may.
Counsel Gregel? Yeah, I, I can, I can see.
That's okay. Is there a way of, of maybe putting this thing in, in two parts so they could vote? So if, let's say we use the old way that you had, the, that you had presented to us as one question and then add the other question where this would be a, a four-year deal and have two separate questions?
Yeah, you could certainly do that. You'll need to think about the implications of what that's going to do to the voter looking at the ballot.
Right.
Well, because some, some people might just want to do it once, a 200 flat rate and, and visit this again next 20, in 20 years, you know, instead of, uh, visiting it every four years where you get an automatic increase. That's why I was looking at it that way.
Right, the only problem would be if they were, um, contradictory, inherently contradictory, then you'd have a question about, well, how do you resolve that contradiction? I think we could word them such that they wouldn't be inherently contradictory.
Okay, so thankfully Holly's much quicker. She was able to, to find the email and I'm just doing a little bit of math. So I stand corrected. It looks like what the difference would be is approximately 240 a month to, to bring it up. So if we were to do the CPI, it'd be 240 approximately.
Do you want to go that though? Do you want to go, no? A flat, a flat rate?
Well, that's, that's if you do the CPI back from 1997 to now.
Yeah, well, my personal opinion is I'd, I'd like to keep the stipend increase reasonable and fair for future councils, not necessarily for myself or anybody sitting here, but for future councils, um, I think it's probably the right thing to do. $200 increase with a CPI increase every four years. Personal opinion.
Counselor V. Hill, now that we've looked that number up, does that sound something? Okay. So what I'm hearing is the, the two-
Where?
It, I'm sorry, is the 200 and then combining it with a CPI for future and then did you guys land on when the pay increase would be effective? Would this 200 be immediately? Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Move on to the ex-sales and excise taxes on marijuana. We've got the retail as well as the medical issue here. Counselor Daniel?
Thank you Mayor. I think the proposal by the staff of 5% for retail, knowing that there's also the state tax, makes sense to me. I do think a lower tax on medical, I even think just 1 or 2% I would be comfortable with. think just 1% or 2%, I would be comfortable with because of the issues that Heather raised earlier. I do think there needs to be some, but I do not think it needs to be as much because of the kind of services those, those patients receive. So, that would be my thought.
Counselor Coleman?
Thank you, Mayor. Eric, I would like to thank you for putting this together, the ballot wording. I was reading it, and it seems a little bit confusing, so I just made some corrections a little bit to see if I could simplify it to where the average common person might understand it. I'm not critiquing what you've written so far, but just, just bear with me, okay? What I have written down here is to kind of make it easy for people to understand, basically, on the retail marijuana, when it comes to the wording, shall the city of Alamosa impose a sales tax of whatever percentage amount that we agree on, on the sale of retail marijuana and marijuana products, only in the event that retail marijuana facilities are permitted in the city of Alamosa based upon an information vote? And basically, the same wording, but it's the, the first sentence is kind of confusing to me, and maybe you can explain the, why it's worded that way, where it says, "Shall the taxes of the city of Alamosa be increased by $500,000?" If I were to see that, I would probably say, no, it shouldn't be. But I don't understand why it's that way.
Well, you have hit the nail on the head, Counselor Coleman. It's that way because Doug Bruce forced through the Tabor Amendment, and the Tabor Amendment says you have to word tax increase ballot questions like this. And I think he forced it through that way for precisely the reason that you're saying, so that people will look at it and say, "Gah! Forget it."
Wow.
But that's the, that's the formulation that we are stuck with, much like advanced services.
The way it's written, I don't think it's fair for the people.
I agree with you, but that's what's written into the constitution of the state of Colorado.
What can we do to make it more simpler?
We have to start off with, "Shall the taxes of the city of Alamosa be increased by blank?" That we have to do that.
We have to.
We have to.
Okay. I don't like it.
So, I have thought, I, I agree with you. I don't like it either. And I have thought about ways to try to rewrite the ballot, but, but there is no way to rewrite it and comply with the requirements of Tabor for what you can put in front of the voters for a tax increase question.
How many, how many municipalities are trying to de-Bruce? It's just one of those things.
Well, you can't, we, we have de-Bruced. De-Brucing means we, we have the voters approve that we can keep excess revenues above whatever the-
But that's about it. You can't change the language.
You cannot change the language of how you present ballot questions to the city.
Counselor Coleman?
What are the consequences if we were to try to make it simpler for people? We just can't do it, right?
The consequences are it wouldn't be valid. So, anybody who voted against it, or even anybody who wasn't even involved in the vote could challenge our ability to impose the tax.
I just think it's really unfortunate that the ballots have to be written this way. But, thank you. You answered my question.
Counselor V. Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to comment with what Ms. Daniels said too. I agree with her as well. I don't want to hurt folks who buy medical by having it as a high excise tax. I agree, 2%, 2 and a, 2 and 1/2, something like that would be good. I do respectfully disagree with her on the retail. I would like to see it at 7%. But, but we can, and that's, that's 7% on top of our sales tax, which is 6.9%?
We, it's 2, 2, then maybe the rec. tax of 1, so we don't get that full 6 whatever. So, yes.
Thank you.
Counselor Daniel?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I did have another question. The $500,000 in the first fiscal year, is that a, how did we get that?
That's another Tabor requirement, so you have to put by dollars blank, and you have to estimate what you think your tax revenue increase is going to be. And since this is a completely new industry, we have no idea. I mean, we looked at some of the data that is in the materials about what other communities have received, and as, as we discussed last time, they range from 150,000 to, or less, to 2 million. So, how do you pick a number?
What we did is we anticipated, based on other council conversations, that you would probably limit, that we would not be Trinidad that has 18 or some things like that. So, we made some assumptions with that. We don't anticipate, if you limit it to 2 or 3, we don't anticipate going up to 500. But the, the recommendations is always to make sure you have it high enough that it, it covers you. You don't want it to be too low. So, 500 sounds like, woo, that's going to be great. We doubt that, that we would be bringing that much in.
And that's also a, a Tabor requirement, that if we're too low, if our estimate is too low, does it have to go back to the voters?
If our, if our limit that we set is below the revenue that we bring in, we have to refund that revenue. And I don't recall whether it has to be refunded to the people who paid it or how we do that, but.
Good guess on the 500,000. I'm, I'm cool with that. I just, I just wanted to know where we, where we're.
Right. And just so, so Ruth is clear, that doesn't mean we think we're going to get $500,000.
Counselor Hensley?
All right, a couple things. So, first of all, I am definitely very concerned about the taxes going through regardless. So, because of that, I think if we start hitting 7%, there's going to be such an uproar and a lot of things brought into the fact that it's so much higher than the average. So, I think we're, this is what kind of scared me from the beginning. And so, this is why I was always sort of pushing, trying to get it so we would do it ourselves together. But anyway, with that being said, so I personally, as much as I think 7% sounds good, I just think that's even going to be riskier to go through. So, I think going more with the average, we have a better shot at it.
So, 5?
Yeah. And that's just my opinion. And then I'm also on the same page with definitely medical being in that 2% range. My question is, is being that this is how it has to be worded, and again, the minute you see something like that, that just says tax will increase and it, for 500,000, how many people will say no right off the bat? Are we able to do a bit of promotion or campaigning for this?
So, our plan is to meet with you to discuss what kind of strategy you want to do. And obviously, Eric will provide guidance on what we can legally do and not do, and that's different for council and, and staff. So, for all of these, we don't want to just put something on the ballot. We need to talk about strategy and what is legally appropriate. But we didn't plan on doing that right now.
Counselor V. Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, my comments kind of dovetail off of Ms. Hensley. I, before coming to the meeting tonight, I read an article from the Durango Herald where their council just voted no on putting, they want, they already have marijuana sales there, and there was some community outreach that they want to tax it even more, and the council said no. Because of what you said, Ms. Hensley, that, that if we tax it too much, people are going to go right back to the black market, and we don't want that either. So, yeah, I agree with you on that. 7% might be a little bit too high. And then another thing I read in that article was, and this was just passed in that law, that new marijuana law, and correct me if I'm wrong, Eric, but counties now, if, if, so let's just say Alamosa County in the future could have a, have a, an election questions, raising the taxes on the city's marijuana stores. So, we should just keep that in mind for, for the future. Eric?
I don't know the answer to that. I will.
There was a court case or something. I don't remember which way it landed, but it was definitely, do they have the ability to do that or not? For some reason, I was under the impression it was the opposite of the decision, but I wasn't following it closely. But there was definitely a discussion trying to clarify that, because there's some of that going on in the front range.
I'm pretty sure that's right. It was, the city was suing the county over having raised the tax, and the city said, "Look, you're driving people out of our businesses by having done that, because they'll just go across to the other county where they don't have that excessive county tax, and we as the city ought to be the people who can determine how our taxes are set." And I believe you're right, Counselor, that the court said, "Nope, the county can do that." But I'm not sure. That's what I need, I need to look up and figure out which way that goes.
Well, the proponents of this entire issue here were wanting to treat alcohol and marijuana in the same vein. And alcohol is, is being taxed at a different rate in the county that is in the city, and I don't see the county coming after the city for more taxes on alcohol. I'm not exactly sure if they, you say that they may have the right to do that?
To impose, to impose a countywide special tax on marijuana. Yeah.
Correct. Yeah. Because at this point in time, my understanding is the county has absolutely no desire to allow retail sales of marijuana, not medical, yes, but not retail sales. That would be new to the city if, if it would happen at the ballot.
Well, there's really nothing we can do about it. I mean, you know, if the county has the power to do it, they have the power to do it.
Correct. Counselor Gregel?
So, if I'm reading this, the 500,000 is the first year. That's what you think something might come, that kind of money would probably come in and be nice, it would. But, and then after that, a sales tax of whatever, we come up 5%, 2% or whatever thereafter, right? Am I reading this right like that?
So, the way it's written, 500,000 is the limit on what we could take in the first year. After that, with our given tax rate of whatever you set it at, 5% or 2%, then if it comes in at 499,000 the first year and 510,000 the second, we can keep all of the 510. It's just the first year we have to estimate.
Okay. The, the point I'm trying to make is the first year, let's say this thing, it passes, we still have to come back to the drawing board and see how we're going to, if we're going to have one, one salespeople, two salespeople, three salespeople, 10, all that. Didn't we hear, didn't I hear a moratorium till we can get everything in set? So, actually, if it passes that first year, by the time we get everything strained out, you're looking at maybe at least what, are we limited to when we have to get this nailed down? Or are we looking at six months? Or are we looking at where, let's say, we'd had a moratorium for about six months while we got everything right? Do you think we're going to bring in $500,000 in six months?
I don't think we're going to bring in $500,000 if we had a whole year. That was, that was the discussion.
And that's why I'm saying that, I think that number is, is too inflated.
Yeah, it could well be.
Yeah. So, why, why not use 100,000?
Because what if we raise 120,000 and we have to refund 20,000?
Or even, or even 200,000, or cut it in half.
Yep, yep. That's a very good point.
You know, because i- if you look at that, this will fail. I promise you. If you look at, you read this, 500,000, you know, so.
I think it's, personally, I think it's up to the voters to decide whether they want to vote on this or not, regardless of the amount that's written on top. You know, if people want retail bad enough, they'll vote for it, and if they want medical bad enough, they'll vote for it regardless of the tax. Counselor Hensley?
Well, what you're saying doesn't make sense, because obviously, they can vote no for the tax and yes for the retail. So, the tax could fail. My question, so could we put something in here where it says on the retail that we chose 5% because it is the average of what cities in Colorado do or something along those lines?
Again, that could go in the blue book.
Yeah.
So, basically, we can't change much on this at all?
No, we can change all kinds of stuff, but I, I don't.
Well, I just, I was thinking, and so I didn't mean to cut you off, but you know how like on the other thing, you put in parentheses, internet or whatever it was? Do you know what I'm saying? Like where you were trying to define something a little bit? So, my question just was, when you say, let me put my eyeballs on, sorry. When you say imposing the sales tax, and let's just say we say 5% on the sale of retail marijuana, can we put, even that that is the average of what cities in Colorado do, or something along those lines? So, it's not like we're trying to do something that's, you know, because here, we have all this information in front of us. Not everybody else does.
Yeah. We, we could do something in, like a parentheses, which says 5%, which is the median amount of taxes on cities that impose taxes.
Counselor, that changes, can change from year to year.
Well, I know that, but that, that would be in this, at the time of the passage of this ballot question, we, we have to, if we're putting something like that in, it has to be the actual number. But it can be for this given year. We could do that.
In light of the fact that we have absolutely no idea what the implications of the sale of marijuana is going to be on this community, I think we ought to, personally, I, I believe we ought to make sure that all our bases are covered for all the contingencies and all, and all the, what would you say, unintended consequences. I'm, I'm totally in favor of 8% to 10% for retail and a 5% for medical. That's, that's my personal opinion. I think you know how I feel about the sale of marijuana. Counselor Gregel?
Mayor, I appreciate your thoughts, but we want this to pass. We don't want it to fail. Because if it fails, then we don't have a tax, period. So, that's why I was even thinking of even at 500,000, taking it half. You know, by the time you, you deal with, with all the, the guidelines and whatever we're going to put in, you know, I hope we bring in maybe 250,000. I, I think you're not even going to get that much. And by the time people get settled in and, and find property and, and whoever you're going to do, the whole year has gone by. The whole intent is for this to pass, for us to have a tax on it. If we don't have a tax, then good luck to the chief.
Point, point well taken, Counselor Gregel. Counselor Hensley?
Oh, sorry, I didn't turn this on. I was just going to say, I agree. Because the, the bottom line is this isn't tied. So, the marijuana could pass, and if this doesn't pass, we're going to have marijuana regardless, and then no tax.
And again, I, I'm not looking for you guys to resolve this issue tonight in terms of what those numbers should be. If there's other approaches or other language that you want, that would be very useful. If you know for sure that you don't want a tax on medical, that would be useful. But if it's a function of wrestling with the numbers, that's appropriate to do at your September 6 meeting. So, we didn't want to just hit you guys with it cold on September 6 and have a completely new direction be thought of. So, that's why it's on your, your thing tonight, but we don't have to solve this issue tonight.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Gregel?
So, we have a somewhat of a consensus on, on medical as far as 2%.
I said 2 now.
2.
5.
2.
Now, we're missing, we're missing a counselor. So.
Yeah, I'm in with the consensus, 2%.
Do you have more, too?
For medical.
I thought we weren't making decisions tonight.
We just have to keep in mind, we do want to be able to collect taxes.
Absolutely.
So, we want to make sure that we're conscious of the way we work this. So, I agree with the council members who are in line with trying to make sure we can pass something that would benefit the city as well as not put too much of a burden on the taxpayers, taxpayers.
Thank you. I guess you have direction?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Well, then, was there anything else here? No. We'll move on to motion approving DOLA grant application for a downtown master design. Ms. Heather?
Thank you, Mayor. This is something that's probably feels a little different, because we, we normally apply for DOLA grants, and we, we utilize projects that are in our CIP or the approved budget, and thus, councils already, in essence, authorize those projects. This is one that's slightly different, because we just finished the comp plan in 2017, and you have not had a chance to see the CIP and a budget. That's going to be kind of geared a little bit more from some of the outcomes that came out of that. One of the things that is going to be in your draft CIP is this concept of this downtown master design. And if you review the, the comp plan, there's, there's significant amount of time spent on what the downtown could look like, getting feedback into what the priorities are, all of those types of things. And it's, it's really a great document, but that's not something we can take the next step with. And so, that's what this plan is. Essentially, it's to take all of those ideas and make it more tangible. It would phase it out. It would tell us how many years it would take. It would tell us what the costs are. We wouldn't necessarily get sealed engineering plans, because that would almost double it, but we would be looking at getting preliminary engineering plans. So, when we talk about widening the sidewalks by 4 feet on each side, what is the cost of doing that? Are there stormwater issues related to that? What's the cost going to be for paving? Are we going to do paving in the sidewalks? What's the cost gonna be for paving? Are we gonna do paving in the sidewalks? Or are we gonna do the paving in the crosswalks? When we talk about undergrounding the utilities, there's a lot of things to, can drive costs related to that. Can we go block by block or do we need to rip the Band-Aid off and do it more? So there's a lot of considerations that need to go into that. And it's not just getting a feel for the actual streetscape we wanna do. The, the goal is to also do a little bit more public outreach on what do they want for streetscape? Do they like black? Do they want brown? What does the business owners and the public want for a final design of, of streetscape? And so it's to make sure we're getting the appropriate stuff there. Also, in regards to the streetscape, we'd wanna look at a drip system so we're not utilizing city staff to water it. We wanna be more efficient than that. We'd be looking at LEDs for the streetlights. All of those have costs and, and can impact what the engineering is. We talked about the alleyways. We also wanted to include the parking. There's some redesign of our existing parking that could add some spaces to the downtown. How are those connections made? Does it need to be improved for those connections? Lastly, something we've been talking about from a staff perspective is it's, it's heartbreaking that we have thousands of people here at Cole Park and we're not pulling them into the downtown. And so for part of this, we wanted to take a look at what do we need to do for that two-block section to get people to make that walk? It's not a big walk. Is it something with wayfinding at Cole Park? Is it something with a lower level of streetscape? It's not gonna be as enhanced as maybe the central business district, but it feels like you're going somewhere and it's connecting to something. So we would want that to be evaluated as well. We met with Kristi Doon late last week and she was, we were just reviewing some of the project timelines and she greatly urged us to try to get this turned in, and the deadline was actually yesterday. However, should council decide that they don't want this to be a project that we submit, we just easily give her a call and, and pull that back out. So we wanted to make sure though that we met the deadline before it closed and, and to get this in. We did contact Gabe with RBI, RPI, because we needed to know what, what are we even shooting at here? And that's the estimate that we received from him is 200. Obviously, we would do a competitive process and we would want it to come in below that. But we wanted to make sure for an application to DOLA that we had, you know, an accurate number. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Counselor Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor. The, there's a $100,000 matching from the city in a cash match. We feel really comfortable with that, being able to, to cover those costs?
Yes. I don't know if we'd be doing the 200 if we don't get the grant. That's a different story.
I had a question.
Counselor Gregel, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Mayor. Thank you. So Kristi feels comfortable that there's that kind of money available? Because mineral impact money is really tight, you know, and I know that we're asking for the first level, tier one?
Yes, sir.
Monies, and this is more for planning and stuff, tier one is, right?
Well, they have a planning if it's less than, if the total project, planning projects less than 100. They have a different process that's dedicated towards planning. Tier one and tier two can be planning, but they can also be other projects. I think almost all of our projects that we've received have been tier one. It's, it's more of a cutoff of the amount. And if you go above a $200 request is when you get into the tier two.
Okay, thank you.
And, and the other part, and I, I probably should have mentioned this. The reason we picked this one is when we look at some of the other CIP projects, they're not as exciting. They're critical, but they're not as exciting from a grant perspective. And I know DOLA is very committed to community planning and making sure that planning's being done well. So I think that's one of the reasons Kristi was excited about this.
Counselor Hensley?
Well, I think this is awesome. It's great that we have this opportunity, especially as Counselor Gregel said. These grants are becoming less and less and harder to get. So I think this is a great opportunity, and I know it came up fast, but it does fit our CIP or what we'll see as our CIP and things like that. And so I think under the circumstances, I'm totally supportive of it because I'd hate to have missed out on this opportunity. So thank you for your hard work.
Very good. Okay, we're good? All right. I as well am excited about this. I'm, I'm wondering which firm were we thinking of employing?
We would do a fully competitive process.
Thank you very much for that. The only thing I have here is my phone number is not 5892593. It's, I don't think there's even a place you can reach me at that number.
That's the main city number. We didn't wanna hand out your personal number.
Thank you very much. All right.
With that, just.
Counselor Gregel?
With that, if there's no further questions, I'll make the motion we approve the DOLA grant application for a downtown master design.
I will second.
I've got a motion to second. Is there any further discussion on the DOLA grant application? Seeing none, start voting, please. Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. We'll move on to committee reports. Who has a committee report? Counselor Vahill?
Yes, sir. I went to the Rio Grande Farm Park Committee meeting. Just a couple highlights. They're looking at, they're trying to maybe try to get the old Wise Apples building and they can convert that into their refrigerator for all the farmers' product in that. So it's gonna take a long time, but they, they feel confident that maybe they might be able to get that. They wanted me to remind everybody of their soiree, their harvest celebration. I think it's September 6 or September 9, somewhere like that, but I'll get you that exact date. And they would all, and they have a, they always need volunteers to go help pick weeds and clean up the, the grounds. So if you guys are interested in that, please get ahold of Julie Mordecai. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Daniel?
Thank you. I attended the broadband committee last week and it's just really exciting to have this group come together to look at the Senate Bill 152. Things Jim takes a huge role in that process. He's doing a great job and really educating the community about Senate Bill 152 and what that means. And they're also looking at ways to support schools and other, and community groups and healthcare agencies in getting faster broadband internet and really working with our current providers. So I just, you know, as, as more updates come, it's, it's kind of, we're figuring some things out, but I do think it's a good group and it's moving forward.
Thank you, Counselor Daniel. You're on the forefront of that, aren't you? Thank you. Anyone else? We'll move on to staff announcements. Ms. Heather?
We had planned on maybe the city clerk giving an update. I'm not sure. After Shanna provided hers, if she has anything to add.
Nothing really to provide. She turned them in about 4:30 this afternoon. We kinda did a brief count of them, so about 172 total on retail and 160-ish on the medical. So we'll go through those and hopefully be done with them by next week.
Thank you, Ms. Holly. Counselor Hensley?
Could you remind me in, just roughly, how short she was?
I think it was 56 and 59.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Heather?
The only other updates we have is more related to upcoming events, just to make sure everybody's aware of them. We do have our exciting annual retreat on Friday and Saturday. Just as a reminder on the, the setup of how that works, it does start at 11. We are doing lunch, but it's a working lunch. It's actually turning into an extremely meaty agenda, so I will apologize upfront if I try to keep us on task and, and keep it moving because it really is, as, as we're processing it behind the scenes and making sure we have all the materials we need, it's something that we could see a lot of areas that council could spend some time talking. So we need to make sure we're all there and ready to start at 11 and make it a working lunch. We do have dinner provided and we will have breakfast the next morning provided. And then we work at the retreat until about noonish or whenever we're done with business.
Heather, are all councils gonna be at the retreat?
It's my understanding that they are. That's what the RSVP is.
Thank you.
And I know there's been ideas that were presented for the retreat, but we started to run out of room. And so we're definitely still gonna get those items scheduled. And, but it was when we're looking at what makes more sense for a retreat, a council manual or some of those other ones, it's sometimes easier to do the council manual ones there and those types of things. We do, I would say, check your boxes if you have not, because I did print out the advisory board and the council policy manual for you. So they're also attached to the agenda item that has been posted. On Monday, the city clerk will be hosting the candidate orientation session and so she's been working on making sure all of that's ready to go and that we help make sure everybody knows what they need to do and answer all of their questions. So that is Monday at 6 o'clock. And then we do have a work session on August 16 related to the recycling discussion and some of those. And so we'll be following up with that. And then again, the employee barbecue is August 18. That's here at Cole Park. And then kind of out of order, but if you back up to August 8, which is a Tuesday, we were invited if we wanted to tour the Budweiser plant. I've tried to make sure that they know we wanna help if we can in regards to getting a new employer in there. But the other thing I've tried to caution people on is it is, it's so far out of town and you pass so many different types of development. It would be very, very complicated if someone wanted, even if they had a million dollars to tie into the city system. It's not just about money and running lines out there. It really does open a, a really scary door and you pass a lot of people that may wanna be on it as well. And so it's something that we wanna be positive and we wanna try to help encourage reuse of that building, which I hear is phenomenal. But we also need to make sure we understand kind of what our role is and, and is not to. But that is, if anyone's interested, that is on Tuesday, the, the 8th at 2 o'clock, and you just meet out at Budweiser. So from a staff perspective, I believe that is everything we had.
Counselor Hensley?
Can I just, on the Monday thing for candidates? If we're not a candidate, are we expected to go or is there, okay? So, all right, just wanted to be sure. Thank you.
Seven, anyway, would it be possible to get a, just a brief update on the construction on First Street by any chance? Would, would that be possible?
Oh, actually, thank you. That's actually very, very important. Thank you, Mayor. Pat, if you could do a quick update on First Street and the closure that's coming tomorrow?
And why, while Pat's coming up here, on the Budweiser building, is the county involved in that also?
I believe they're aware of it. Gigi seems to have a lot of information related to it and trying to make sure people are grouped into it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you, sir. As everybody notices, we are progressing on First Street. We're, we're working with, working closely with XL and Charter to get those utilities moved so we can build the street. We can't really get busy in First Street until XL is done and out of there because they have to, they have to lower their gas lines. They have a low-pressure service line on the south side of the street. They have a high-pressure line on the north side of the street. You'll see, if you go by there tomorrow, you'll see a bunch of four-inch pipes stretched out on the sidewalk by the college library. They're, they're welding that. They'll be boring from the west, grabbing a hold of that and, and pulling it back. So they've got to, they've got to get those lines installed, get them tied in, get the old lines blown out, get everything done so we can, we can demo their old facilities as we build the street. We will be, we're scheduled to pave Mullins first part of next week. We got, we got the rest of the concrete poured that will, that will bound the asphalt. Then we will, we will move before the end of this week. We'll, we'll move into First. We'll take a asphalt zipper and demo about three feet of asphalt right on each side of the street to give us room to pluck curb off that's gonna be replaced and, and things like that. I don't wanna expose the whole street until XL is out of there just in case something happens and we're not able to complete the project this year. I don't wanna open up the whole street quite yet. And we will, like, like I'm sure you've seen, tomorrow morning, we will close First Street. XL is bringing in a second, a second drill and another potholing crew to further expedite their work. So things are, things are moving.
Thank you, Pat. Counselor Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor. Pat, how far down the, the closure goes? I was pulling in the turnaround at Adam State on there and there was an orange cone that I almost hit. I didn't hit it, but it was right in the middle of the turnaround. Are they coming down that far or was that just a badly placed cone?
That was probably a badly placed cone. It was, we, we were probably helped with that location by a student. But I, we, XL is planning on relocating some of their facilities a little bit east of Edgemont just to get ahead of the game for next year. And so it, it could have been associated with that as well.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure it was still okay to turn around in there.
Yes.
Counselor Gregel?
As far as the, the excavation that's going on up there, are we having any problems with the excavation? There's rumors that somebody found some kind of ruins or something. Is that just a joke?
That would be news to me.
Yeah, no, there is, there is, and that's why I said that they were delaying a lot of stuff because of that. So I don't know.
We found a lot of pipes that nobody knew about. We found a lot of communication lines that nobody claims. We, we found a lot of stuff, but no ruins that I know of.
Okay, thank you, Ben.
Pat, how's coordination going with the hospital?
I think it's going well. I think it's going well. We set up the, we set up the ambulance, the alternate ambulance route, for lack of a better term today, and they test drove it. The, the ambulance folks were, were happy with it and we'll continue to work with them on that. Valleywide has been supportive with our, with our need to use part of their property for the, for the ambulance route. But that will, that will guarantee 24/7 access to the emergency room.
Thank you very much for that safety measure, Pat. I think that's really important. Appreciate that. Is that all you have?
That's all I have.
Thank you very much.
I can answer more questions if you have them, but that's all.
Okay, anyone have any more other questions to Pat? Thank you, Pat. Ms. Heather?
I did think of one more announcement. We do have, we're putting the DOLA banner up at the Ice Rank Multipurpose Facility tomorrow at 8:15. Kristi's in town for the Economic Development Summit, so we wanted to be able to let her be in the picture as well. It's not as big as a groundbreaking or ribbon cutting, but it is something that we had enough time to plan ahead and wanted to make sure you guys were invited if you wanted to attend. It should be a five-minute picture. I think part of the reason DOLA likes to make sure that people are aware of what projects they're funding is when it comes from the Mineral Impact Fund, there's times at the state level if they need to balance the budget, that tends to be the fund that they tap into. And so I think it's always a promotional event to make sure people realize the value that those Mineral Impact Funds serve in different communities. And so we're really, we're always happy to be able to help in those efforts to make sure people realize the value. But obviously, we also received a GoCo grant and a Gates Foundation grant as well, and we are pursuing, continue to pursue a Daniels grant. So they're not the only funder, but their funding has been critical to a lot of our projects.
Thank you, Heather. Now move on to council comment. Who has a comment? Counselor Gregel?
Okay, thank you. I wanna go ahead and congratulate Gigi Dennis for being appointed to the Mineral Impact Board. We fought a lot to try to get representation on that board. And in fact, I was the first one that was appointed by Governor Owens to sit on that board and, and then was reappointed by Governor Ritter. And then I had to get off because my brother got cancer. And then I, I forget the administrator that took the position. Oh, my God.
Was it a county administrator?
Yeah. Anyway, he got it and then he got transferred out of here. So we kept putting the bug in the governor's ear saying, hey, we need representation.
That was Barry Sashida, wasn't it?
Barry, yeah, Barry. So I don't know, Barry came on and then that position came available. And it's so important to have somebody from the valley appointed to that board. And back then, we had, there was a lot of money. Today, as Heather mentioned, it's, it's a deal where when the, the state budget is, is down, that's where they go and take the money from, for projects. So it's a very important position and I think Gigi will do a good job. And I'm glad that we're finally back on the board. And from, you guys probably seen from CML and talking with some of those guys, they're good people to work with. They're, they, they like the valley. Deborah Downs did a lot, a good job for us. And now Kristi Doon's did the same thing, so it's a good, good deal. So I just wanna congratulate her again on that board.
Thank you, Charlie. Counselor Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say I really enjoyed the City Services Fair. I left before the rain came, barely, but it was a great job. There were a lot of kids with very sticky cotton candy faces, so it was wonderful. The police department, everybody did a great job, a great, great, great job. So thank you very much for that. It was, it was wonderful. I also wanted to say thank you to Pat for putting a new sign out by the roundabout that informs motorists that they are to yield to people who are already in the circle. I've had several people from my ward, I know Andy's like, it's normal. I've had several people from my ward worried about that they're going to essentially turn onto the street that the high school is on, and people don't understand it, that they have the right of way when they're going around. So I really appreciate the new signs. I think there will be more happy, feeling safer people in my area, so thank you for that. Hopefully, people read the sign. It's a great sign. You did a good job. And then I also just wanted to say thank you, because it's not freezing up here, and I hope you guys are comfortable, because I don't see sweat dripping or people like nodding off in the back. So thank you for making it more comfortable and not cold where my nose is freezing up here. So thank you.
Councilor Hensley?
I was just gonna echo the same thing about the services fair. I also worked out timing-wise that I left just before it started to rain, but it was an excellent event. I know I took my granddaughter there, and she loved getting into all the different vehicles and testing out all, being able to do that. And her favorite was the police car. So I said out of all of them, which was your favorite. But I just think all the kids had a great time. So thank you.
Absolutely. My wife and I were leaving as Ruth was getting there. Anyway, it was a great time. The kids, I think, they just have a great time when, when the city puts this on. I think it's such a wonderful experience for them. And, you know, they get to appreciate a lot of the things that the city does and does for them as well. But thank you very much for that. Councilor Vehill?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm glad I didn't forget, I didn't forget this. But did you all know that July of 2017 was the wettest on record in Alamosa? And I got a few phone calls and emails and Facebook messages from folks concerned about their streets after that last big storm we had the night of the city fair. And I just wanna communicate again to the people of our town that, that Pat and Heather and our council have thrown a lot of money at streets and curb and gutter and infrastructure to make sure this rainwater is getting out. It might seem like we've had a lot of rain, and you're right, but these type of events don't happen often. And yet, we're still gonna throw a lot more money to the trouble spots in and around town where we get a lot of flooding, rainwater, and that. And to Pat and Heather's credit, a few of these people and their places who were, there was water above their curb and into their front yards and that, city staff and crews went out and pumped some of this water out. So thank you to you, to your, to your staff, Pat. And again, to the people in town, I invite you to our CIP process, and you can see how much money that we're throwing towards streets and curb and gutter. Thank you.
And Council, Councilor Vehill, I think the other part, too, that this illustrated, and I think you pointed out, is, you know, some people, they're having this happen, and they don't know where to call. And so we do have after-hours crews and that can help with these things and all of that. And so I think it indicated a definite need for us to do better at making sure some of these numbers are easily accessible, and they know where to call, and those types of things as well, because it's a little hectic in the middle of some of these storms, and people are worried about the water and that type of thing. And so I think that highlighted an area that we need to do a little bit better at as well.
Thank you very much. Yeah, they generally call me or Jan or one of us, that's for sure. And then we call you, Heather. But yeah, it starts raining at my part of town, and I can always depend on one individual to call me as soon as he has two inches of rain in his gutter. Anyway, other than that, we've got a need for a couple of executive sessions this week now, and so I'll entertain a motion for those. Councilor Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I move that we move into executive session pursuant to Colorado revised statutes 2464024F for personnel matters for evaluations of the city attorney and the city manager.
Got a motion?
Second.
I've got a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Seated and start voting, please. Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
We'll move into executive session in about five minutes. And after our executive session, we'll move back into regular session. No further business will be discussed.